Okay, I'd like to call the Hyde Park School, the Central School District's Board of Education Meeting to order. Today is October 10th, 2013, and we're at the district office. May I have a motion to go into exec session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to the employment, future employment of a particular person?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? We're now in executive session. May I have a motion to go out of executive session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? We're now out of executive session. And could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I don't believe we have any agenda modifications for tonight. So if we can move on to, may we, I have a motion to adopt the current agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried. I guess we're into pride, and we'll hand it over to the superintendent.
Okay. I want to start with homecoming and the ribbon-cutting ceremony. And first and foremost, I would like to thank all of the community that did turn out for supporting us. It was an incredible event. It was an incredible game, lots of surprises. And one of the things that I want to propose is that there were a few key community members that really went above and beyond in organizing and getting donations. Almost all of the food that was there that evening was donated by the community. So we wish to thank them, and we wish to thank the people who helped organize all of that. So I'd like to get a few plaques for the Keep Hyde Park on Track, the leaders of that organization, for Bobby Goodman, for her role in the PTA Council, and the Facility Steering Forum, the Football Booster, people in the cheer. And just to publicly thank them for all the behind-the-scenes organizations. So in addition to everything we did as employees for the event, the event really doubled as a result of some real hard work. So if I have support for that, we'd invite them into the next meeting and publicly recognize them. And again, thank you so much to all of the community members who donated food items, time. It truly was a memorable event. If you haven't seen it, you can go on YouTube.
The game tomorrow night, right?
And there is, uh, is it Saturday?
Saturday.
Saturday afternoon, yeah. I thought it was Friday, but it is Saturday afternoon. So I could go on and on, but in the essence of time, I won't. But it was an event that I will truly never forget. It was just unbelievable. I have two thank-you letters related to the event. One is from Bill Wispower, wishing to express his appreciation to the Board of Education and the district admin team and the community to have the opportunity to be part of the Roosevelt High School Stadium project. On Friday night, to see the smiles on everyone in attendance, especially the students, was very rewarding. There is still work, this is from our architect. There is still work to be completed. However, last March, we were not sure if the stadium would be ready for any game. The efforts of the entire team came together to allow Friday night to happen. As I stood there Friday night, I realized that my vision of the stadium had been surpassed and has turned out to be the, one of the best in my 30-year career. So that was a very nice letter. And we received a letter from John Golden, who was certainly honored that evening as one of the first football players ever for Roosevelt. He came out onto the field, he had a jersey, he got to shake all the hands of all the football players that night. It was truly special. Dear Grier, what a special evening on 9/27/13 at the dedication of the new sports complex at FDR High School. There have been a number of memorable events over the years in Hyde Park, and the opening of the new athletic facilities has to be considered one of those. We are aware of the doubts of many as to the cost of the improvements. Friday evening proved that it was the right decision. The excitement generated, plus the obvious boost in morale for all attending, was much in evidence. Gloria and I thank you, Amy, Pat, Doug, and the board for allowing us to have, had a part in such a wonderful event. Onto the soccer tournament, that was the next day, the Joel Thompson Soccer Tournament. Again, another incredible event. They won in a double overtime, so long game, but an exciting one, a white-knuckle game. Oh, back to homecoming. We had over 2,400 paid entry tickets, just for some numbers. The concessions made $2,800, that all goes back to the senior class. So that was homecoming. Also on Saturday, the Hyde Park Teachers Association held a golf tournament. They hadn't had one in many years. I participated, along with two other administrators. I did not win any awards, but the tournament was a fundraiser for the Hyde Park and the Stattsburg Libraries, and they received, they earned, the tournament brought in $3,000. So the Hyde Park Library received $1,500 donation, and the Stattsburg Library $1,500 as well. It was a, it was a very fun day, a little cold in the morning, but it warmed up and was wonderful to be out there. Also that weekend was the Get Moving event that we hope to hold every year. That's from the New York State Physical Education Society. I probably got the acronym wrong, but we know generally what it is. There were over 17 staff volunteer members and 52 families that participated, which was an excellent turnout to demonstrate, you know, the importance and the fun of physical education for our families. I am sure that with Margaret Roble and Amy McCardle's support, that this will be an annual event. And next year, we will, of course, move it to the track. But we really want to thank Margaret, Amy, and Lisa Hekt for, for that event. It was just, the whole weekend was chock-full of activities, not to mention the Hyde Park Fall Fest. So I don't, open it up if, I'll do one more pride, and then I'll be finished of being proud, but we do have a lot to be proud of. Doug and I had the opportunity to attend the first ever, got that, Steve? It's up on our website and Facebook. It's the National Walk to School Event at Violet Avenue. A number of years ago, the city of Poughkeepsie applied for the Safe Routes to School Grant. They finally got it together, and they did, they put in the sidewalks, so we had the inaugural Safe Walk to School. The police, Town of Poughkeepsie Police Department was very supportive, visible there. The fire department was there. The town supervisor, Todd Tancredi, walked with us, as well as one of the town councilmen, and Doug and I, and Deanna and Aviva, and all of the staff. And every single student at Violet Avenue had one of these T-shirts. So the staff and all of the adults left Violet Avenue. We walked down to the children's home, and then we met any child who was either walking or dropped off for this special day to walk with all the T-shirts. So very nice day for the Town of Poughkeepsie and for Violet Avenue, and a beautiful day, so.
Okay.
That concludes my, oh, no, no, no. I'm sorry. So at this time, if Debbie and Doug could stand up, I will actually go to the podium for this one. All right.
We have to come over?
Yeah.
It just makes it more special if we stand and sit. So last evening, we had a very special event. Every year, the Mid-Hudson School Study Council holds an annual award ceremony. Every school district in five counties has the opportunity to nominate someone from four or five different fields, an administrator, a teacher, a board member, a support person, a facilities person. And knowing from experience, each year, we fill out some applications, and sometimes our people get them, and not always, because as I mentioned, it is very competitive. These are the awards for excellence. Again, this is a five-county organization, and this year, on behalf of the district, we nominated Mr. Douglas Heater, not Hyder, Mr. Douglas Heater, for the Award for Excellence in Board Member Service. And after reviewing the application, we received word that he was indeed selected for that honor. The event is held at Anthony's Pier Nine. There's approximately 500 people there. It's an incredibly festive event. We also nominated Deborah Brozen for her service, not only as her support role for our district, but probably what pushed the application over the edge was her involvement at the state level, at the county level, and the local level as a leader in our area for district clerks. The application process involves a recommendation, where there's quite a bit of writing, and filling out their background, and years of service, and everything behind that, and then three letters of recommendation. And it wasn't hard to find people to write letters of recommendation. In fact, you have to say, "We can only accept three," and send them in. So we've gotten creative, and we put in quotes from other people. But certainly Doug's years of service on the board, his commitment to volunteering in our schools on a daily and weekly basis, his participation on subcommittees, and his attendance at concerts and athletic events is extraordinary and above and beyond. And we were happy to put this application in and have him recognized. And likewise, for Debbie's application, we actually, one of the, the regional district clerk person wrote a very nice letter of recommendation, because actually Debbie helps make her job a thousand times easier. One of her colleagues wrote a letter, as well as several other people, so, and a board member nominated Debbie as well. So we are very proud that in this process of recommending people for awards for excellence, that they did see that your, your nominations rose to the top. So I would like to applaud Doug Heater and Deborah Brozen. So. Not quite 500 people, but you had them last night. They received medals and their certificates, so again, congratulations.
Well, I guess I get to talk now. Anyway, I'd like to say that it is a great honor. What touched me the most was how happy everybody was for me to get this, and I think that meant more. So, thank you. Okay. Do you have a report?
Just a little, small update. We had a, an incident on South Cross Road involving two of our pedestrian students and, and a car. And I just wanted to publicly say I have reached out to, you know, the families. I actually went to the hospital. The children are fine, although they were not unharmed, but they are fine. And we have started the process with the town and the county. Wayne is handling that to do everything that we can to see if we can get a crosswalk, a traffic light, whatever they can give us. Knowing that that is a long process to go through, we started to look internally, what can we do? And we're finalizing a process for the students who live in the development across the street to actually board a bus, and we'll drop them off. So the bus has been identified so that at dismissal, if the students choose to, they can just hop on the bus and get safely home. I can't force them to avail themselves of that, but I think it's a good option, and I think there are enough students who feel that they will take us up on that. So that should be in place within a couple of days. One last decision to be made is whether or not they want that same service being picked up in the morning. It doesn't seem to be as much of an issue on the way in, but certainly on the way home. But I just wanted to publicly say that we are working on permanent solutions with the town and the county and the state highway department and everybody. We need to, but that's slow.
You know, I point out that the last time, in order to get the light at 9G, I think it took six years, if I'm not mistaken. So it's not easy to get.
But I was happy we could find a transportation alternative so that no student felt that they needed to cross that road if they choose not to. And just on the, there have been a couple of people, you know, inquiring, and we continue to monitor the, the climate conditions at North Park Elementary. They're monitored on a daily basis, and we are continuing with further testing.
Okay, is, can we move on to item 6.2, Presentation of External Audit? We have tonight Leslie Tilson and Tom Kennedy to, from O'Connor Davies LLP, to give us the external audit results.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Kennedy. I'm a partner in the firm, O'Connor Davies. This is Leslie Tilson. Leslie was the engagement manager for the, for the audit of the school district, and we're happy to be here tonight. You should have two documents from us. The first is an audited financial statement, as well as what we refer to as our management letter. The financial statement itself is actually sort of like an 80-page document that contains many different things, and it includes, most importantly, audited opinion, which is stated that it is an unmodified opinion. That language has changed from previous years, I'll explain that in a moment. But what an unmodified opinion is, is that your financial statements present fairly, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, the financial result, the financial results and position of the district. Okay, I think I share that with you first off. They also include management's discussion and analysis, which is, basically summarizes the financial activity, as well as district-wide financial statements, so that's all the capital assets, all the liabilities, everything all together. And then the note, as well as fund-level financial statements, general fund, capital projects fund, so on and so forth. Then the notes to the statements, if that wasn't enough, there's more, combining schedules and statements. But your statements also have a reporting measure that is, you're required to report to, on your use of federal funds. So there's also two separate reports, excuse me, two separate reports that we have to issue, that you are in compliance, and you are in compliance with the federal funds requirements and the schedule of what those funds are. So having said that, I mentioned an unmodified opinion. This past year, for this year that we're reporting on, our profession changed how the auditor's reports are presented. They changed the language. It's not materially different, but we used to refer to it as unqualified opinion. Would, now that unqualified opinion equals the same as an unmodified. So the language has changed a little bit. We think it's a little clearer. That's why they called it the Clarified Auditing Standards. But it also changed the way we conduct audits. I won't bore you with that this evening. The other deliverable I mentioned is a management letter. So what we try to do in that is, we give a summary of communications, certain recommendations, and then some other information that might be helpful for you to know. So what I'll do now is, I'll let, I'll turn it over to Leslie and let her talk a little bit about the general fund, because as you're aware, the general fund acts as the operating component of the district. So she can give the highlights.
Good evening. I'm going to discuss the general fund, the comparative schedule of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. The page that I'm looking on is on page 47 of the report. You have five columns here, your original budget, which is your voter-approved budget, your final budget, which includes any budget amendments or budget transfers, your actual column, encumbrances, and your variance between final budget and actual. I'm going to focus on the final budget versus actual. Total revenues for the final budget were $77.6 million. Actual revenues came in at $80 million, leaving excess revenues over budget of $2.4 million. Total expenditures per the final budget were $79 million. Actual came in at $73 million, leaving with budgetary savings of approximately $4.7 million. The original budget and final budget anticipated to use $6.4 million of fund balance. Actual results came in at a net increase in fund balance of $1.3 million. Add that to your beginning-of-the-year fund balance of $4.5. The district ended the year with $15.8 million of fund balance. And of that fund balance, the district had established certain reserves, referring to page 46 of the report. So that fund balance is broken out into five different categories. You have non-spendable restricted of $6.4 million, committed fund balance of $1.1, assigned fund balance of $4.7, and your unassigned of $2.9 million. And that unassigned represents approximately 4.7 of the subsequent year's budget. So the district is slightly over the required 4 percent that's mandated by New York State.
Does anyone have any questions so far on any of the things I presented or Leslie's mentioned with respect to the general fund? So New York State mandate's not supposed to exceed 4 percent. You're a little bit over it, but honestly, that's not that bad. So having said that, briefly about the management letter. Now, you should be aware that we met last week, actually, my colleagues met last week with the audit committee, I had a conflict unfortunately, and reviewed in a lot more detail the management letter itself and all of the comments. But the thing I want to leave you with is that there are no material weaknesses in internal control. We're required to report if there are any of that, material weaknesses in internal control. We'd have to inform you about that. There are two separate addendums, one with additional recommendations and some comments, and there's also a second addendum, B, with some other informational items. I won't go through those right now unless anyone has any particular questions, because they were discussed at length. Does anybody have any questions on those? Then I'll move on. Lastly, as part of our management letter, we also have a special communication, also under the clarified standards now for accountants, that says precisely what it is that we should be conveying to you when we have this opportunity. It's actually towards the back of our management letter. I don't think you need to go to it, but I'll just summarize very briefly. I think you're aware of what our responsibility as your independent auditors is to render an opinion on the financial statements. You're also aware that management's responsibility is to comply with laws and regulation and establish internal control. One thing I should share with you is our audited opinion, again, that the financial statements are fairly presented, extends to the supplemental information that appears in the back of the schedule. There's some landscape pages of actual general fund information and detail as well. Financial statements actually contain estimates, so there are some sensitive type of estimates that inherently are sensitive because there are assumptions, actuarial assumptions relating to OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefit. Certainly, I hope you collect every dime that the district is due, but the collectibility is an estimate. There are some disclosures similarly that are sensitive, and obviously, anything to do with pension plans is, requires some judgment, the post-employment benefits, and certainly the fund balances as they're delineated by type of assigned, unassigned, that kind of thing. There are no financial statements that remain uncorrected. Any recommendations that we made, management accepted and recorded. There were no disagreements with management during the conduct of the audit. And any time that management has a question, or others, perhaps, board members have a question, we encourage you to reach out to us. In fact, we're, we've assisted the district with several other matters, but in no way does that ever jeopardize our independence as your accountants, and we are the independent auditors, so. With that, I'll conclude and ask if there's any questions.
No questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wayne asked us to stick around for a couple minutes for, I guess he's going to do a presentation.
Later on in the meeting, we'll have a vote on accepting the results, and once that's done, I'd like to see it posted on the, the website, if that's, make it, make it available to the public to see. Okay. Now, we're going to have a fund balance update from Wayne.
Good evening, everybody. One of the goals for this year included presenting fund balance in conjunction with the audit report. So we're going to be presenting tonight on fund balance and reserve recommendations that work in conjunction with the external audit and timeliness of such. So fund balance is the difference between estimated revenue and estimated expense. And for the fund balance contributors, it's unanticipated revenues that may have come throughout the year, and unspent expenditures, as they just outlined during the audit presentation. So for the outlook for Hyde Park School District as of June 2013, revenue, as Leslie mentioned, was $80,2,630, and our lesser expenses of $78,698, which left, left what she eloquently put together as $1.3 million net change in fund balance. So it's really helpful for folks to understand how fund balance really comes to be, and this is really the core of the goal in the presentation tonight, is to go through those revenues that do come to the district that we don't know about, unanticipated. So it's two-sided. We'll go through the revenues first, and if you look up at the screen, we start up here, where we received a larger BOSI's return than anticipated. And this can come from a host of different reasons, causes that were not used, or students left the district or the program, and we don't have an idea. We get an estimate in the beginning, and we wound up with an additional $362,000 that we didn't know about. Refund of prior year's expenses, several small items. We never knew that, where we would receive. Example, if we order supplies in one year and they're delivered in a subsequent year, we have to record them as a revenue or a rebate in the, in the following year. So we had $110,000 worth of them. We got some tuition, homeless aid and CILLAN grants. These were all unexpected. They're certainly welcomed, and they do great things for the school district, but they totaled $202,000. And sometimes we just get a phone call, and, you know, we got $25,000, and it's a welcome addition to our year. State Medicaid payments were frozen for several years, and we reported such, and this was finally unfrozen in 12/13. The federal and state now comes in one check, which is a difference for us, and that netted us some back Medicaid funds of $52,000 for years prior from the federal government. Our impact aid, this is a large jump, you can see it's almost $1 million, $868,000. We've been actively pursuing additional acreage and revenue for many years, and we finally were successful, and netted an additional $868,000. finally were successful and netted an additional eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Multiple-year project, thanks to a lot of hard work in the business office and folks that really worked hard to get that. It wasn't easy. So, we had a hurricane, and we applied for FEMA through our Facilities and Operations Department in conjunction with my offices, and we had some damages, and we received nineteen thousand dollars. And then, we had some miscellaneous revenues, buildings used and things where people were utilizing our buildings a little bit more, and some more revenue came in, and that was a net of one thirty, one sixty-eight. So, now to the expense side. Sometimes, on the same token, we spend less than we anticipated we were going to spend to begin with. We start each year with a planned fund balance, and what that means is we try to stay as close to the four percent as we possibly can, and we try to build that into our budgets. And we've significantly reduced those for thirteen, fourteen. There's still some of those funds in our budget during this current year, but they were three point eight million dollars. Capital projects were closed, the general fund. There was some conversations over the last several years with regards to closing out old capital projects from the nineteen nineties and two thousand early, and sixty-two thousand was the net of closing out all those capital projects that were hanging around and old in our books. Here's another one that's unexpected. It's certainly welcome, because it's six hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, but our DHIK is half of, more than half of our health insurance plans, and when they have a good fund balance, they pass on that savings back to us. The timeliness of when this happens, you know, again, we welcome it, but it happens in June of any given year, and our budget is voted on in May. So, we're not sure if we're going to get it or not going to get it, but again, we always welcome it. The health insurance buyout, the decision to do this is typically budgeted. It seems as though more people are taking on our health insurance plans rather than taking the buyouts. There was a little bit of a net of sixty-one thousand dollars. And then, unemployment, the expense was increased last year because of the layoffs that we have done over the last several years with regards to closing an elementary school and reductions. So, we have to show that, and I guess a lot of people got their jobs back, and again, that's positive, and we called a lot of folks. So, there was an additional unspent amount in the expense for that. The next set of expenses are all contractual, so we kind of just grouped them into one spot. In the past, we've budgeted for additional contingency, which means like a safety net for legal cases that happen to the district at any given time. We're served with several, you know, legal suits, and we keep a contingency, which, again, for next year's, for this year's, removed, but was there, and we're lucky not to have a lot of cases that, you know, that wound up being, but we always put that liability in there, and we've reduced that significantly for this year. Insurance contingency, oftentimes, things, we have to increase the amount that we insure the district, so we always keep a contingency there. And so, for example, the track and field that we just built, we have to, you know, for certain things, and we'd have to go and get additional insurance on that property because it's changed where we've put a contingency there. Boiler maintenance, this is a great example. We saved twenty-two thousand dollars in what we typically had to do to our boilers, because we put new boilers in. So, what we were spending on repair and maintenance and having folks come in from outside vendors, we've saved as a result of putting those two boilers in. And then, this one, the one on the bottom here, comes from the controllers. We also put in a contingency for tax, refund of real property taxes. Oftentimes, people have tax surgeries, companies, individuals, residents come through, and we have to pay back, and they asked us to take that out. And again, that's a safety net that was there, but will not be there in thirteen, fourteen. Rounding out our contractual, we have special education. Students come in and out of the district, and certainly, the related transportation. But you can see between the two of those, at the year's end, we netted close to eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars, six twenty-one on tuitions, and BOCs, part of that's from the, you know, things that we save on students coming out of program or coming back to district. And, you know, this year, we were able to take those savings and put them in thirteen, fourteen, into great programs in our school district. But the total contractual, as you can see, comes to one point four. One other area is the debt service interest. The district's very lucky to have a great bond rating, so we always, you know, budget conservatively on that, because you never know what can happen with interest rates, but interest rates stayed very, in our favor. It's surprising me sometimes when I'm reading the results, but we netted an additional two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in interest expense. So, there's four components of fund balance. We have, and again, I'm kind of repeating a little bit, so I'll go through it quickly. Our assigned fund balance, this represents the carried-over encumbrances. So, the non-spendable restricted and unassigned, and I guess the most important thing I want to say about this is it's really the unassigned that's a portion, you know, say, oh, my God, Hyde Park's got fifteen million dollars. No, it doesn't have fifteen million dollars. It's got three point six million dollars in unassigned. That's really what we have to use. So, this is where we left off in eleven, twelve, and as you can see, this is what Leslie just went over. And our ending fund balance, so our total fund balance of fifteen point eight is in the following categories: our prepaid expenses, carried-over encumbrances of half of a million, designated for twelve thirteen is three point nine, our reserves is six point four, and our technology upgrade, which we discussed last board meeting and was approved, is one point one, leaving us with two point nine million dollars, and again, slightly over the four percent by under one percent, or point seven four. So, this brings us to the reserve recommendation portion of the presentation. We worked very closely with our auditors and are very thankful that we were able to do this in conjunction. It was a much easier process for me, for the business office, and for them, to really set us on the right path to, you know, making sure we're covered in tough times. So, you'll see the, I'm just going to go to this slide here. Our current funding for reserve for employee benefits is seven sixty-nine. We discussed the current liability, which brings us up one point one million dollars to the new balance of one point nine. This covers us for employee benefits post-retirement. The ERS, retirement contribution continually goes up. It's something we discussed during the budget process every single year, both ERS and TRS. Unfortunately, there's only an ERS reserve, so we are funding an additional one point four to bring the balance to two point one, which is really a beneficial thing for us, because I can utilize, or we can utilize those expenses in budgets where we need to reduce the budget and utilize that in a four- or five-year plan that the auditors and I have discussed as a budget savings each year for four, five years. So, that's really one of the nicest ones, when you do have these reserve funds. Reserve unemployment stays the same, same with workers' comp. Again, we did reviews of all these expenses to make sure that we were where we needed to be, and the reserve for tax surgery. And there was no net increase or decrease to this outside of just what the, for what the comptroller asked us to do is move the expense into a newly funded reserve for thirteen, fourteen, and that's three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is moved out of the reserve and into a new reserve for the thirteen, fourteen year, and then we're in compliance. So, with that being said, I'll open up for questions and answers from the board.
Do you have any questions?
I just have a couple of questions. Is the unassigned reserve the only reserve account that has a percentage, a maximum percentage assigned to it?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And then, a second question is, based on the information you just presented, do you expect, will, in future budgeting, any changes that we can expect in future budgeting based on the funds, the surplus funds that you find, that you have, or?
Well, we cut a lot of contingencies out. We cut them down significantly. We'll see a change from that. We won't have the ability to be funding reserves to the current liability in the future, and that's, you know, we're in a very good spot. So, just in June of this year, just like June of last year, we learned about the DHIK premium holiday for thirteen, fourteen, and again, will be recognized.
Yeah, that's a tough one to budget for, yeah. Just thinking about, you know, thinking like interest rates, perhaps.
Fingers crossed, yeah. Hoping that they, you know, that we benefit, we're going out for our funding for the track and field and boiler, so it looks very promising for us time-wise with regards to interest.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Wayne. You made your ten minutes. Very good.
Right. Thank you, Leslie. And just, you know, before I get off the stage here, I just want to thank Leslie and Tom for the great work, and specifically Linda Steinberg, who did a phenomenal, wonderful, fantastic job preparing for the audit, working with me, together with the audit, communicating, and really, you know, a little round of applause for Linda, so thank you.
Wayne, Wayne, would you let the, tell those people who come in, they're out there. Tell them to come in. They were afraid to interrupt you, I think. By Tom, Leslie. Okay, Wayne, you get another ten-minute burst.
Oh, no, this one's two.
Thirty seconds.
One-minute burst, okay.
Gru did a great job describing all the events going on at the track. It is fantastic. It is back in the hands of the contractors for now. If you look on the website, you'll see the red track now and the striping. I didn't get up there today, but I hope to get up there tomorrow in the morning to see the progress and that the stripes are supposed to be happening around the track. We learned how to groom the track, all right, so how to clean it, and, you know, some of the things we didn't think about that we knew were coming. In fact, you know, in the soccer game, there was a small injury where there was, you know, something to be cleaned, we're like, how do we do it? The sod, a start.
The side story to that is we never had to clean the dirt.
Right. Kind of swirled away with the rain, but there's certain procedures that we have to do. The sod for the soccer field begins in the beginning of October, perfect growing season for this, and if we do not have our well intact by that time, we will have a, you know, because the well hasn't been completed, they are going to provide water to water all this, and I'm making sure that all that good landscape is being watered as well. Luckily, we had a little rain this week, so it was helpful. Then, some of the things that are going on with regards to, you know, moving towards the end of the project, the basketball court. We've worked together with, you know, several key individuals, athletic director, myself, the administration over at FDR, and our facilities and operations to come up with a design so the basketball court's there, and, you know, it looks good, and we're looking at a design, and hopefully, that'll happen real soon. And the last thing is just the stone in the parking with regards to, by the tennis courts is being completed in the near future. So, you know, really is ending up, and it's a fantastic project, and I was glad to be part of it. But I'll continue presenting and giving you guys updates until it's absolutely one-hundred percent done.
Okay. Thank you very much, Wayne. At this time, I'd like a motion for seven point one to enter public participation.
So, moved.
Second. Any discussion? I'd just like to say that we'd like you to keep it to three minutes if you can. I'm not going to cut you off at exactly three minutes, but if you could be as brief as possible, we would appreciate it. Looks like there's a lot of people here, and we only have twenty minutes booked for this time, so all those in favor? Okay, we are now in public participation. Would anybody like to address the board?
By the way, I just wanted to say that I was with my children in Violet Avenue when Aviva Kafka started the walking project, and so, I do recognize that these things take time, so, very nice, though, so you did that for them. Actually, though, I'm here representing the parents, students, and...
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Margaret Craig.
Thank you.
And I am here representing the parents, students, and coach, right there, of the FDR boys swim team, and that's Derek Kettner, by the way, many of whom are attending this evening. You can see three of the boys, two of the boys up there, and we have girls swimmers here as well, along with their parents. We'd like to give you a hard copy of the letter that was emailed to you yesterday regarding the merger with Marlboro. I'm sorry, this is really emotional for me. This is definitely a hard thing to do. Couple of points. The copy of the minutes from the June thirteenth Board of Education meeting are going out to you, a copy of the memo and letter of intent for the boys and girls swim team mergers are going out to you, and a roster of returning and new swim team members. We do not have the numbers from Highland as of yet. After some further research, we have found that the matter of the merger was considered under the consent agenda on June thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, and was not discussed in open session. The memo from Dr. McCardle Rosenberg and letter of intent contain discrepancies as outlined in our letter to you and is therefore not an accurate reflection of the status of the boys swim team. We would like to stress to the board the following. Coach Derek Kettner, the returning coach from last season, is available to coach and has an established relationship with the swimmers and a proven rapport with the parents. Prior to sign-ups, the current number of swimmers is seventeen, including six students from Havlin Middle School. As outlined in the attached roster, Highland students, again, are not included in this number. The communicated practice time of three P.M. to five P.M. at Marlboro prohibits the inclusion of Havlin Middle School students. Because we have no busing, this practice time is also not conducive to parent transportation of the swimmers from FDR to Marlboro. We have an opportunity to acquire pool time at Bard College, possible later pool time at Marlboro. The memo to the superintendent from Dr. McCardle dated May thirtieth, two thousand thirteen, regarding the boys swim team merger contains inaccurate statements. The statement that the merger would be a definite advantage to our team is incorrect. As stated above, with approximately seventeen FDR swimmers and Marlboro indicating twenty-two swimmers on their roster, the total number of swimmers would be excessive and drastically reduce the swim training time and individual number of events our swimmers would compete in at meets. The practice schedule and name change would confuse and discourage those students who want to sign up for the FDR swim team, especially the up-and-coming swimmers from Havlin Middle School. The statement that we feature few swimmers is also inaccurate, as it makes the presumption before sign-ups have even occurred for the current season. On the letter of intent, the reasons for combining the teams again remarked on insufficient number of participants and inadequate facilities. The letter of intent for the girls swim team merger with Millbrook did not indicate this team having inadequate facilities. These discrepancies lead to further confusion. The compilation of the above facts pertaining to the swim team merger may affect the viability of an FDR swim team in the future. With transparent communication between the athletic director, coach, swimmers, and parents, the swim team will flourish. We respectfully request the board to reverse its decision on this merger and give the FDR swim team back to our swimmers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board at this time? This is Coats. And Mr. Coats. Ooh, double barrel.
My name is Jane Coats.
And I'm Dave Coats.
We live in Statsburg, and we have had three graduates from the Hyde Park, proud graduates of the Hyde Park Central School District. I want to let you know, I heard of this problem just this week, and a little disheartened, actually. I'm hearing more of the details as I'm here tonight. We had a little seventh-grade boy named Peter who started swimming on the FD Roosevelt swim team, and it was one of the best things he ever did. I want to encourage you to continue the support of the FDR swim team. That son of ours was blessed to have Brian Berg as his coach, and Brian challenged him his junior year, wanted to know, what's your goals for next year? And Peter said, I want to make states. And Brian was like, okay. It was a stretch for Peter, but guess what? Peter made states. You only had, I believe it's four male swimmers from the FD Roosevelt High School swim team that made states, and our son was one of them. But what you don't realize is now, he is in his fourth year at the Rochester Institute of Technology where he swims, and when you open the program up, it says that he went to FD Roosevelt High School, and he is the captain of that swim team. And we are very proud of that fact, and we're very proud of the heritage that we've established with our, with our program. I must tell you, I am very disgruntled about perhaps the lack of support of the athletic administration for this team, and I have history to report about that. I coached the FD Roosevelt Girls Field Hockey Team that was disbanded under the watch of our current athletic director. I don't want to see this program come to the same demise, and I know we're still talking about a merger, but my concern is this might be the first step. It changed my son's life, and he's so much better for it, and he had a great career. And we thank the board for supporting that program, and I hope that you will continue to do so. Did you want to say something?
I wear two shirts. I wear two pieces of gear tonight. I wear the one for Peter because he is at RIT, and he is a captain, one of the boys captains of that swim team there. I wear another shirt underneath this, though, and that's the shirt that he got. In two words I'll use tonight, and they go along with sort of this financial statement of interest and investment. of interest and investment. Peter got interested, and he invested his time, but he was a part of a coaching staff who got interested in him and invested their time in him from, and I bring these up because we have an incredible wealth of feeder capability into a swim team program. So I wear under this his state shirt, excuse me, that Jane and I got to wear when he got to swim at States. We have so much potential. We have summer swim teams, we have swim clubs in the area, that for someone who's interested in this program and willing to invest themselves to draw upon that feeder system, there's no reason we shouldn't be able to sustain viable Boys and Girls Swim Teams here in Hyde Park. Peter is an example of that. He is also a mechanical engineering student, so he is very invested in his studies and in his extra, his additional activities. It's part of the blessing he got of being a student here at FD Roosevelt and part of what he has carried on now to RIT. Thank you.
I would encourage you, we're so thrilled about the track, but don't forget the track and the football field. Don't forget all these other sports. Don't forget.
Thank you. It looks like we have another taker for the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Stanton. My son, Robert Stanton, graduated and was captain of the FDR Boys Swim Team. And he did not go to States, but what he did get from being on that swim team was a wonderful rapport with his coach, Brian Berg. He, he gained so much self-esteem from being on that team. And that's what many of the swimmers have received from swimming for FDR High School. Our swim teams, the boys and the girls, have brought great accolades to the Hyde Park School District. And I'm not really quite sure why we would want to merge and give the name of this team to another school. So the other thing that I would like to mention is that we have had many swimmers year after year in the top 20 or in the top 10% of our school. Why, again, do we want to give that accolade away to another school? And by naming them a different name? So that's what I would like to share this evening. I also had a daughter swim on the FDR Swim Team. She also did very well, was a captain. And, and like I said, I just, I just really ask you, this is very something, something very personal, personal to my children. My son was actually one of the people that got up and spoke at Netherwood Elementary when there was talk of starting a swim team. So I know this would break his heart. I told my daughter this evening, and she said, it took us so long to try to get a swim team at FDR. Why do we want to do this? So that comes from a swimmer. So I thank you for listening to me this evening.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
Hi, I'm Lynn Schiffer. I am a mom of three FDR swimmers, two who have graduated, and one is my son Zachary, who's here today. Last year, my son was the captain of the Boys Swim Team, or one of the captains of the Boys Swim Team. And there's been a lot set of reasons for keeping this team. And what I want to really encourage and what I want to say is about the coach that we had last year, who is here today, and who, as was said earlier, he really developed a wonderful rapport with the kids. And a couple of specific things I want to point out is when the kids first met him, beginning of the season, they heard about a coach who had had two tours of duty in the military and that he was himself a state swimmer, and that he was expecting very, very high expectations of these kids. My kids came home, to be honest, a little bit scared, that they didn't think they could meet the expectations. He saw them swim, and he realized that he had some kids who really were fantastic swimmers, but he also had a lot of kids who were there not because they were fantastic swimmers, because they wanted to get better. And he did that. He helped these kids get better. He encouraged them, he worked with some of them individually. And, you know, what I saw over the course of the season is all those kids improving at their level and their ability, and he helped them do that. The second thing that was really unique about Derek being their coach was, I know I can speak for my kids, who hear about people who were in the military, hear about, you know, the experiences, but never knew anybody personal, personally. They were used to being in lots of sports, having coaches that are the same people that they saw every day in school, that were their teachers. And to have somebody that was more diverse, that was from out of our community, who was able to share those experiences, I know my kids came home having so much better of an appreciation of what it meant for people to be in the military and to now have somebody that was their coach that they had a relationship with. So we have a coach who's really great, and that I'd hate to see the team not be able to keep using that coach.
Would anybody else like to address the board? Ms. Berg, how are you?
I'm just wonderful, how are you? I'm Christine Berg, Eight Water Tower Road, Hyde Park, New York. Twenty-eight-year teacher in the Hyde Park School District, recently retired in June. Loving my retirement.
That's why you're smiling.
Yes, can't get the smile off my face. Presently coaching at Bard College, but I had the wonderful experience of being the FDR Girls Swim Coach for nine seasons. And I received, Brian and I received a phone call Sunday evening, which felt like a punch to the solar plexus, I guess, as you would say. Very disheartening to hear news that the FDR Boys Swim Program has been merged with Marlboro. Not so much so that there's anything with Marlboro, but the fact that what has been worked for nine years to build is suddenly being pulled away from us. Many of the people speaking this evening have had more time to let things settle down in their minds. I'm speaking from my heart. I'm speaking as a former employee of the district. I'm speaking as a community member. I'm speaking as a parent. Two of my three children had the opportunity to swim for FDR and represent FDR. I cannot tell you the pride that I felt as a parent with my own children, but all the people you see here this evening are extended family for Brian and I, and that was the biggest component of our program. We wanted it to be a swim family, so everyone could interact and see each other outside of the pool. And that's something we were hoping that would continue once we got past our experience here at FDR. One of my biggest concerns is the openness, open communication that I feel needs to happen. If a decision that's as important to many of us has been made, we would have liked to have known what went into the decision and where was it that even the present, the coach, coach that was the Boys last year or the sitting girls' coach, who was still in the district, no one spoke to us and said, hey, you know, we're thinking that this is an avenue we may need to follow, and that was never addressed. I could have offered words of support, counteroffers as to how I would see and how issues could be resolved before it just went and it was adopted to, in my mind, disband a program that has been so successful. The FDR reputation is known in Section 9. Our swimmers are respected. Our swimmers are appreciated and given accolades from other teams. So we would really appreciate if there is a second thought into the process and work with and approach Section 9 to reconsider the decisions. I'm sure there, I'd be more than willing to assist in anything to see what other avenues are available. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the board?
How you doing? My name is Andrew Hoffman. My son, Robert, is a current swimmer for the FDR team. He's been swimming for years. He started at the Hyde Park Swimming Tennis Club under the Bergs. You know, they, he works so hard, a lot of them work so hard to become together as a, as a team. And to, we've been going to the schools. We were at Havlin at the meet-the-teacher night. The kids were there, you know, trying to get new people to sign up, talking to the parents, fundraising, and then to find out that there's decisions been made without any thought or any conversation with the people that are involved with it the, every day, is a little disheartening. And for me, as a parent, you know, I, you know, I work, my wife works as a teacher in Hyde Park. And to, you know, to start to think about, how, how are we going to get our son to three o'clock practice? Like, how are we going to do that? And, and does that mean that he can't swim anymore? Like, we, he gives up that sport that's important to him, that, that he has his friends, that they, they share, that he has to give that up? And, and we know that, you know, kids need to have things where they feel good about to build their self-esteem, to make them feel good about what they're doing. You know, what's it going to mean to them when, when he, for him, when he's not going to be able to do that? You know, so I think that, you know, it would be good if people can really take a step back and really look at the big picture. You know, it's not about having 100 kids swimming. It's about, you know, what is that team doing for the kids that are involved with it? And if it means that the kids that are involved in it, that it's doing something good, I don't know why we, we would do anything as a community to take that away from them. You know, so I would just hope that you would reconsider your decision and look at the big picture and the impact it's going to have on the, on the community and on these kids that go to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to the board?
I'm Andrea Paterno, and I'm a mother of Girls Swim Team. And I'm just concerned that nobody was really talked to about any of this. And I'm concerned that smaller-team sports are just going to kind of get done away with if they're not seen as being as important as the bigger sports. And I'm also concerned with community pride with these kids. They have pride in their, their school, they have pride in their sport, and I'm just concerned, how are they going to, on, you know, days when they have meets or something like that, they can't dress up in their FDR team gear and have pride in their, in their sport and their team for their school they're going to because they're swimming for somebody else? So I just think that you guys should reconsider this and give this back to our school so that we can have our pride. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak to the board at this time?
Sure.
Ms. Drago, son.
I'll speak to the importance of swimming very quickly. I don't know about this interest. I spent about 25 years playing basketball at various levels. I stopped that because I got out of it, but as you know, I'm down at Marist every morning, Monday through Friday, and swim a half a mile to keep myself in good health and keep my heart ticking. Swimming is important.
Good for you. Anybody else? Mrs. Pickering.
Good evening. Carol Pickering, Cardinal Road in Hyde Park. I just learned yesterday about Mr. Heater and Mrs. Brozen's Excellence Award. So I wanted to come tonight personally to congratulate you and say a few things. I'm not sorry that I missed the bad food and the raucous environment, having been there many times.
Chicken and fish again.
But I have a really good excuse. I didn't know. Anyway, to Debbie Brozen, I think you've been with us since '06 or '05? '05. And we hired you, and we worked together for a number of years, and you were always a tireless worker, and you always, always did your very, very best in a very hard and complicated job. People don't realize how much responsibility, legal responsibility, how much, how much pressure and how much goes into being the district clerk. And I just want to publicly say that I do know that, and that I'm glad you were honored with an excellence award from the Mid Hudson School Study Council. I used to always say to Debbie, she always wanted everything to be perfect, and I would say, don't seek perfection, seek excellence. And guess what? This award is for excellence. Excellence is attainable. Perfection here and there, little tiny bits, but not on an ongoing basis. So congratulations, Debbie. And to you, Doug Heater, I've known you since 2000 when I came to the district, and you were already active as a volunteer in the school district. And you are the consummate volunteer. You are more involved, not just in the school district, but in many other aspects of our community. You can find Doug Heater and his wife, Robyn, driving for Meals on Wheels every Tuesday morning, working in the battered women's shelter, in the homeless shelter, and much more on some very personal levels. Doug has always been a tireless champion for all the kids and all of our students. And when things would get really, really tough and money, things needed to be cut, he never would allow programs for students to be cut that had value and worth. And I can say that from consistently, and sometimes unpopulately, when, when money was really, really tight. On a level that's personally important to me, as are all the student programs, he was a relentless drum major for the arts, always. And sometimes they were going to cut this or that, and no, he wasn't going to let that happen. Or athletics, or anything that was of value to students. He also, you should know, he monitors the school finances like you wouldn't believe. He knows where every bone is in that backyard. Wayne gets away with nothing, right, Wayne? Even if you wanted to. Not that you'd, but the checks and balances, he monitors, and he understands. He understands what's really going on with school, with school finance. He gives so much time. So Doug, you are the consummate volunteer, and I'm proud to have worked with you for many years. I guess it was 10. And now to call you neighbor and friend. So congratulations to you, and again to Deb. You earned those medals, and hang them up. They do matter. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you didn't go over three minutes because then I would have got, you know. But thank you very much. Would anybody else like to address the board at this time? Okay, may I have a motion to go out of public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Yes. Some of you guys know me. John Sigrid and I were the driving force to form our swim teams. And my daughters were relatively successful, I would say, but that's neither here nor there. When I was in high school, I was also a swimmer. We did not have a swim team. My friends, who were swimmers, left our school to go to Lourdes so they could swim. I didn't want to do that. I swam on the Y and whatnot, but when I got the chance to help to form a swim team, I was very excited. And not everybody was for it on this board at the time. There's people that aren't here now that were here then, and there's some here that were then. But anyway, when I heard that we had no coach and only six swimmers, and that there was a darn good chance that we would not be able to run a swim team for the boys, a merger preserved it, at least for the next round. Situations may have been, may have changed since then. Whether or not we'll be able to approach Mahal and reschedule the entire league at this point, I don't know. I would support doing that. If indeed, now we have 17 swimmers and a coach, which a few weeks ago wasn't the case. But the intent to dissolve the swim team never existed. I would have fought that with tooth and nail because I know how important it is to children who do it. My daughters, both are benefiting from it. They've got employment in the summer from it now. My dau, youngest is at Alfred and doing phenomenally. It's just really kind of cool. I know how valuable it is. The thought of it totally disappearing from the Hyde Park District was abhorrent to me. If we can preserve it and keep it in-house, that'd be nice, but I don't want to dissolve it. I don't know. Do you think we can approach Mahal?
If, if we could just vote on and then, then do the discussion, then I won't forget to vote later on, you know, all in favor of leaving.
Closing public participation.
Closing public participation.
Oh, did I talk too soon?
Yeah, you got a little bit, okay. But that's okay.
It's emotional, what can I say?
That's okay. All those in favor? Okay, now, how about it?
I already did.
Okay, oh, you're done.
Well, so I guess the, I mean, the question that I would have is, why should...
Well, so I guess the, I mean, the question that I would have is, what would be the process? I mean, is there, I mean, it sounds like there needs to be a discussion. Perhaps something's changed, uh, can it be looked at? I assume that there's probably, you know, a question as to whether or not the league is already, you know, that we've, we've gone past the point of, of being able to, to change it for this year. What, what's, what's the process?
Well, I think, um, first of all, you know, I'm not a swimmer, I haven't been involved with a swim program, but I have heard conflicting information from either side. And this is not a great place to discuss this because we haven't, it's not on our agenda. We can talk, but then you can't answer, so it doesn't, doesn't kinda work as a, uh, getting things resolved. We had discussed earlier that perhaps we could have a meeting where we could, uh, sit down and actually talk about it so that we can hear you, you can hear us, and we can make a decision that way. I think that would be a fairer way to do it than just to have you listen to us, say whatever we wanna say, and then, um, you go away and we go away and then everybody says, well, what actually is gonna get, you know, accomplished? So if it would be, um, amenable to the folks that are really interested, if we could have a sit-down, um, I would be willing to be there, I believe.
With a couple of parents, yeah.
Uh, with some parents, saying career. We would like to, we wouldn't, in an, in this situation where we've heard one thing, we don't wanna say, "Well, you know, you don't know what you're saying because we heard this," and, and then embarrass somebody else. So it would be better if we did this in private and I think if that would, is acceptable to you, certainly the two ladies that have been spearheading this, if you have time, uh, I will, I will fit whatever time you want into my schedule, 'cause I'm retired.
Can we ask Amy to approach Mahal to find out whether or not we're passing through those things?
Yeah, yeah, and I, I would invite Amy to the meeting and, um, I don't know. Dan, did you wanna say something?
I was just gonna, uh, reiterate what, uh, Glenn had said. At no time has the board even broached the question of dissolving a swim program. Uh, the discussions that occurred based on the information that the board had made it very clear that the way to salvage this program, the way to keep it going and to sustain it for another year was the merger. And I, I would suggest, I'd like to attend, but, uh, one comment I will make, if a meeting is held, no more than three board members can attend because once a majority of board members are there, it becomes a, a board member, meeting. But by the second token, if only three members attend, then no decisions can be made because you need four board members to make a decision. So there's gonna be a play out of times and scheduling to, uh, address this issue in its entirety. I had no swimmers. I had eight kids participate in varsity sports at the school, no swimmers, uh, 'cause we could never uncover the, uh, swimming pool, which is under the, uh, gym at Roosevelt High School because that would give credence to the rumors that have existed since that building was built. I will comment that I currently have a grand niece, my sister's granddaughter, swimming for, uh, University of California at Fullerton. And I do pick on my sister about that quite often because of the three family members, she was the least athletic of the group. And I said, "How did you ever do that?" And she responded, "I married a swimming, I, I, my daughter married a swimming coach in, in uni, in New Mexico and, uh, he, he created it." So coaching can create athletes with skill to become swimmers. I understand all of that. And I do support swimming as I've supported every sport here. Uh, we've had programs, we've tried several times, and because of lack of interest and lack of participation have had to be cut. But only after every effort was made to sustain and, and continue the programs. Field hockey was one. Uh, it fell and finally demised on one issue and one issue alone, as I saw it. The state made a choice to, to move soccer, girls soccer from the spring to the fall and therefore the soccer program directly competed with field hockey and forced the girls in that program to make a choice between one or the other. And, uh, that, if you look at the records and look at the numbers, caused a demise 'cause there wasn't enough people to support it. An upcoming sport was lacrosse and girls support, girls, lacrosse program has been tried twice and could not be sustained beyond one year. They drummed up interest, got us numbers, we had, we had a team. The next year, we couldn't get the numbers. Couple of years later, we did it again. Again, they drummed up numbers, we got a team, couldn't sustain it for another year. But the board has been very supportive over all these years to, to support every program we can to keep it in-house, where it all feasible. So I want, I want people to understand that. This is not, this is not a, a, a program that, you know, comments that were alluded to, well, we're out to, to cut sports, to cut this, to cut that. We're not. We're not out to cut anything. We're out to sustain everything we can within the financial restrains, restraints of this district and the number of students we have in this district to support those programs.
Okay, so in closing, I think we'll have a meeting, but before we close the conversation, I do wanna reiterate that there's nobody more dedicated to our athletic program than Dr. Amy McCardle, who has supported everything athletic for this district. And when, uh, the merger was on the board agenda in June, it was only after the posting for a coach, uh, was concluded and we followed the process that we always follow. We had no coach, six returning students, and no other vehicle to go. So she determined in the best possible decision-making that in order to have the swimmers that we have swim, um, we would do a merger and we have done mergers. And I'm, I'm not negating any of the, uh, feelings that people have about swimming for FDR or, or our athletic program, but I just needed to clarify that in no way, um, was our athletic director not behind a program. In fact, her approach was to salvage a program. So, uh, the other thing I wanted to clarify, uh, because we need to be clear about this going in, is that yes, it does depend on whether or not the, um, Mahal League can change their schedule for this year if we get that far. Um, but the other thing is that we don't, we do not have a JV team. And, um, that in developing a roster for a swim team, there's the, uh, selection, let me get it wrong again.
Selective classification.
The selective.
For eighth graders and below.
Right, the selective classification program. And you cannot, uh, consider middle school students on a team for the following year until that process has taken place. And historically, we have had, um, a few individuals who have qualified, um, through that process. But again, um, I'm, I'm not sure historically, we've had six people qualify all in one year. So, um, first of all, we can't count them. We don't have, until the process happens. And secondly, um, historically, we have never had, um, six, um, people, um, through that criteria. So I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, again, at the time that the decision was made, the decision was made to save a program because the only other alternative at that point in time with, uh, going through every process we have for posting for a coach, being informed that the coach from the previous year was, um, had different circumstances at the time, um, we had to make a decision, um, at that time because these mechanisms to run these athletic events for multiple counties are done months in advance. So the decision was made to save the program, uh, as opposed to abolishing the program. So I just wanted to clarify that. So Doug and I'll reach out to Mrs. Craig and, um, maybe a couple of others if they're willing, and we'll sit down and see what our possibilities are. And again, you know, it, it depends on an awful lot of things that, uh, may be beyond our control, but I think we're willing to sit down with an open mind and explore the possibilities.
I have a question. With this merger, we have a pretty big roster that they presented to us, seventeen kids. Is there a limit on the roster that we can merge together with Marv Arl? Would that limit our kids?
I don't think so.
Two teams?
I don't know, but I don't think so.
I don't think so. But I can verify that.
Yeah. I, I would say that, um, I hope we have learned something from this and that in the, in the, uh, in the future that we, uh, we handle these kinds of incidences a little bit better than we did this, this one. But, you know, you can't go back. So we'd like to do that now. We'd like to move forward and do the best we can for your children and, you know, and the team. So, uh, Ms. Berg, you have a, you can answer that question?
When it comes to competitions, you have... When it comes to competitions, you have your scoring heat, each, there are twelve events, including diving, and you have three representatives from each team. And if you would like to run exhibition heats, there's an additional fee charged per event. So therefore, if you have fifty-something kids on a team, generally, many will not get the chance to compete in a meet unless you add multiple exhibition heats.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else? Anything else? Okay. Um, far as I know, we have no board discussion on the agenda today. Can I have a motion for nine point one, the consent agenda?
So moved?
Any discussion?
Yeah, I had a couple of minor questions. The overnight field trip, I noticed that there's only one chaperone. And I realized there's only five students and it looks like, and it's only one-way transportation, so it suggests that there's probably a, all the parents are following the bus.
Oh, and then they go home with them, yes, that's true.
Yeah. I just, anytime there's only one person.
Thank you for coming.
Situation.
Thank you.
I have a concern about safety and, and, and this may not be the one to be worried, be concerned about, but if we had a chaperone, only a single chaperone on an overnight, that would make me nervous if I didn't know that there were a bunch of parents that were gonna be there as well.
Okay, I think we have a policy on...
Yeah, I think, well, I can get back to you and, but I will speculate for one moment. I rarely do that, Perry, but I, I think it's worth speculating. Um, chaperones are paid.
Yep.
And we do have a ratio, and these are within the ratios. My speculation is that there will be a lot more adults there.
Yeah.
But I will double check.
I agree.
Um, I think the parents typically go. Um, so I think it's a matter of listing one official chaperone, but, um, you bring up a good point. I mean, if he, if the chaperone is the official chaperone, um, what do we do in the event that the, the chaperone has a medical issue?
Gets sick.
Gets sick, so, you know, it may be...
Or one of the students gets sick and requires...
The chaperone to, yeah.
I just wonder if we should look at that and perhaps have, you know, there is a ratio and it's probably like a one to eight or, you know, such, whatever the ratio might be, but not less than two chaperones perhaps.
Yeah, I actually, I, I agree. Two seems to be the minimum because should somebody be injured and one has to go...
You know, stay with someone at a, in a medical facility.
Or a medical emergency.
Or transport home or something, something of that nature. Yep.
And as far as I know, we don't normally provide any informational meeting or training for parents that are going there in terms of school procedures and school, uh, accommodations, which would be necessary in case, like you indicate, either the, the chaperone got ill or was forced to travel with a injured student. The remaining student would then be, uh, covered by a parent who has no, possibly has no knowledge of how to contact the school district or what the procedures to follow, what needs to be done. So, uh, I think we need to look in that too. If we don't go to two chaperones, we need to go for training or certification that a parent is available that can follow up.
I also need to verify that that was, I'm hoping that wasn't a mistake because it's listed as the requesting teachers are Jim Osborne and Katie Rimph and I would, I would think they'd both be there. But I'll double check and we'll make sure we have two people on the trip, one way or another.
Generally speaking, the ones like off-site music, these are the ones with only a few number of students. The ski trips, the cheerleaders thing, they always have, you know, sufficient numbers. So, any other questions on the consent agenda?
Uh, the only other comment I would have, it's, you know, it's great disregard, uh, regret that we have to discontinue the employment of Anthony Di Ambrogio for his untimely death. I think that it's, yeah.
Very sad.
It's very sad.
Yeah, and just a reminder for the public too, we did hold, um, a moment of silence at the last meeting.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. Are we now down to, are we down to, I can't get this...
Ten point one.
I'm trying to get down there. Come on, move. Okay, may I have a motion for ten point one, special education placements as noted in the agenda, please?
So moved. Second?
Is there any discussion?
A quick summary, the present, the package includes recommendations from CPSC for nine students, from the CSE for nine students, and one five oh four. Uh, the CPSC, which is our preschoolers, uh, we have, uh, three students being classified after initial eligibility check, and we have three additional students that are transfer students from another district that come into us from preschool programs in those districts and they're gonna be continued in our current district. As far as the CSE goes, we had two students transferring in from previous other district with IEPs and those are being continued. And we have one student with an initial eligibility that is being classified. So the net is, well, from this, uh, package, we're getting six new students requiring special support.
Thank you. All those in favor? Oppose, carry. I have a motion for ten point two, consultant agreement for special education services as, uh, listed in the agenda.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion?
I reviewed the consultant agreements and I, uh, I recommend that they be adopted.
Thank you. All those in favor? Motion carried. I have a motion for ten point three, consultant agreement for security advances as, uh, listed in the agenda item.
So moved?
Second?
Any discussion?
Just one thought, I said, in reading through this, so we hire, these are Hyde Park Police Officers.
Correct.
They're not employees, they're hired as consultants.
Right, 'cause they're, they're basically on their, well, shift.
Yeah, they're not, yeah, so they're not working through the police force. Do we have any insurance? I mean, is there, do they provide any insurance?
Uh, I don't know.
How's that handled?
Yeah, there's insurance that covers us and we multiply, cover because it's a school district function, so...
So it's a liability insurance, so it covers any action that they may take as well?
Yeah, so there's primary and then our secondary.
Okay.
Uh, all those in favor? All those, we move on to ten point four. We have a motion for agreement with Hyde Park Teachers Association, uh, as indicated in the agenda item.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried. Okay, here we go. Down to the ten point five. Can I have a motion to adopt the Board of Education goals as listed in the agenda?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Everybody's happy with the wording?
The only thing I question is, under Board Operations, we have investigated an alternate space to be used as a board meeting room. Is that truly a smart goal if there's no timeline on it? Or are we just saying that it's by the end of the year?
Hopefully by the end of the year.
Okay, so it's implied.
Okay, as, as modified then.
Okay. I know Kevin would've asked if, if he had been here.
All right, we'll, we'll fudge it. All, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Let me, uh, move this down. What are we up to? Have a motion for ten point six, budget transfers as, uh, indicated in the agenda item.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried. Uh, and now I kind of have a motion for ten point seven, receipt and acceptance of the external audit as, uh, listed in the agenda item here.
So moved?
Second?
Any discussion? I'd just like to point out that this was reviewed in great deal detail in the audit subcommittee meeting and we approved the...
No, we recommended it's approved.
And we recommended it be approved, yes. All those in favor? Oppose, action carried. Oops, I keep hitting the wrong button here. Have a motion for ten point eight, established employee retirement contribution reserve fund as, uh, indicated in the, in the agenda item and it was also as indicated in Wayne's fund balance, uh, presentation.
So moved?
Second?
Any discussion?
I just point out that this was, uh, this... I just point out that this was, this, this was part of the discussion and recommendation from the Audit Committee as to an acceptable and prudent action with some of the available general funds from this year. As is the next item on the agenda.
Right, all those in favor of this one? Oppose? Carry. Ten point nine, establish a benefit accrual liability reserve fund as indicated in the agenda item.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Now that Dan's already discussed it, yeah, but it was discussed with the auditors. All those in favor? Oppose? Carry. Move this down. Have a motion for ten point ten, amend the four oh three B plan, that's a retirement plan, as indicated in the agenda item. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. And I have a motion for ten point eleven, new course curricula as indicated in the agenda item details.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? She carried. Have a motion for ten point twelve, first reading on board policies forty-three twenty-one point five, fifty-one fifty-two point one and fifty-one fifty-two one dash R, which is a regulation, as indicated the, in the agenda items as what, what they are. I have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Motion carried. Have a motion for the ten point thirteen, waiver of first consideration and adoption of policy ninety-four twenty-one point one, which I would point out is something we already do. That is the building principal and classroom teacher evaluation system. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Thank you very much. Have a motion for ten point fourteen, designation of board policy committee member. That would be Gary McGrath as listed in the thing. Thank you very much for stepping up to that. May I have a, a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Gary volunteered for this position.
He did.
The designation might imply that he was the guy, didn't step back.
Joyfully, joyfully.
He did step forward after understanding because he's new to the board. And after considering available positions and needs, he felt he could fulfill this and we agree with him.
Absolutely.
And the bruise to his arm from the twisting is feeling very nicely.
All those, all those in favor? Thank you, Gary. And I have a motion for ten point fifteen, standardized testing, which this is a a resolution about the, shall we say, the ills of standardized testing and the way it's being rolled out. And this is in favor of changing the system that we have here. Let me have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
A question, now, this, this is a statement from the district that's being forwarded to who? Is it the SED? I.
Eventually, yes. I think it goes to the, the group that sponsored it first, right?
Is it going through the School Board Associations from other ones or are they going individually? There are, there are several districts, even more than several, I know what goes, you got few, some, several. Districts are concerned about the testing and the severity of it and the cost and, and pressure on the students, so.
Well, unlike other resolutions that we've had where we actually stated as, you know, we call upon, you know, Governor Cuomo or where, where it indicates where it being, where it's being sent. This one just adds us to the list of school districts that have adopted. So there are multiple organizations that keep lists of school districts that have adopted these types of policies. So we'll make sure they're aware that we did, but there is no formal.
Yeah, but that was my concern, there was no listing of being sent to somebody. And once we send it, I don't want to just be a, a little, our little secret here because it is important.
Right, we know we don't want to send it to Dr. King because he would just say, that's very nice, and it would go.
Are we agreed it is a king?
Yeah, so I don't think we had a vote yet. All those in favor of doing this? Oppose? All right, thank you very much.
Is Dr. King close by? Was it last night or tonight that Spacken Gill?
You know, it, it's soon. I think it's tonight because we remember, it's tonight and I was sitting.
He'll stop by on his way home.
You know, I was sitting at our Dearest County CSO meeting and it was interesting because the Spacken Gill Superintendent really didn't receive a whole lot of official correspondence and she was really not sure whether he was coming or a representative. So everything we read sounded as if he was coming. So it would be great if he did and that people were able to go hear him, but I'm, I'm not sure. So maybe we'll read about it in the paper tomorrow.
Can I have a motion for ten point sixteen, creation of an audiovisual operator position? Remind you, as well as stated in the agenda, remind everybody that that's concerning the videotaping of board meetings in the event the misuse can't be here.
We don't want to put you out of a job.
We're not putting you out of a job, but we're hoping that a student might be interested in learning a little bit more about running a camera and something, much like the light board operator and for the plays and the musicals. So all those in favor? Or is there any discussion?
I just wanted to say, this gives Steve the opportunity to do what many people can't do, be in two places at one time.
And I would like, are we still in discussion?
Yes, we are.
I would like to add that we are so thrilled that Steve does this. But we do find ourselves scrambling whenever you go away. And so we would like to formalize a process for how to help the community out in a way that you have done for free as a volunteer for all this time. So again, Steve, thank you so much.
All those in favor? Do we get a motion yet?
I don't think there's a motion yet, yeah, I was just gonna ask.
Come on.
Well, you didn't ask.
You have, I asked for a motion.
No, you didn't.
No, you just thought of speaking on what was.
Oh, can I have a motion then? All right, can I have a motion?
I, I just gave you one.
Gary, second.
Thank you. In a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? See, I gotta do one, you know, per meeting.
This is what happens when you have discussion before you have a motion.
This is true. May I have a motion for ten point seventeen, creation of a point two FTE music position? Something that is a wonderful thing, I think, that we have so much participation that we need to extend the hours of our current teachers, so.
So moved.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much. Okay. We're back to eleven point one. May I have a motion for, to enter public participation at this time?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? We are now in public participation. Is there anybody who would like to address the board again? Or at first, or third, or?
I just wanted to address Dr. Rycheck's clarification regarding Dr. McCartel. I appreciate the fact that, that within the administration, that you have such hardworking people. I can certainly attest from personal experience from the age of five through 12 with both my children, that Aviva Kafka was a formidable individual in both my kids' lives. And I have been blessed to have many, many instructors in the Hyde Park School District with eloquent communication. But I'm just, would like to point out that with the, this particular situation, I, I welcome the chance to sit down and I understand your point about that type of conversation. But the, the reality is this, if we cannot count on our middle school students and we are looking at the students that we only have and you're only talking about six students, then what would it have hurt to make six phone calls? And how much communication and clarity that would have added to the scenario? So regardless of intent, the fact remains that there was no follow-through. And this fact remains, pure and simple, that someone who has participated and so very much benefited from that program for the past three years will not have that opportunity if it maintains itself from three to five, Monday through Friday, at Marlboro High School. And if he's one example, there will be others. So it won't be whether or not it's a dissolution, it will be whether or not you have any participation at all. So I thank you for the opportunity to discuss this with you further, but I just wanted to add my clarification.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else like to address the board?
My name is Kathy Craven and I just want to, again, address the things that Margaret did that I don't know where the number six came up, came from. If you do an inquiry now on section nine, there are nine swimmers that are listed. Also, I was just told that the girls' coach also applied for this job. So whether or not Dr. McCartel talks about coaches' situation, there was another coach that had applied. So there was a coach. My son passed the selective classification test, it's possible. He's been swimming for six years, he's made sectionals every year. And the people that we should contact is section nine, not Mahal, about getting.
Yeah.
Okay. And thank you for listening to us and thank you for talking to us. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the, the board? Last chance. May I have a motion to go out of public participation, please?
So moved.
You second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I'm so slow, I try and get my arm moving before the votes.
Oh, oh.
Anticipation, that was an anticipation vote.
All right. I guess the only thing, if you're gonna stay for the, to the end of the meeting, then we can maybe work out some details on.
May I comment on?
Yes, you may.
What was that? Phone calls to six students wouldn't, wouldn't have provided any additional information. The selective classification test is a test that's administered to students that have applied to participate at high school level sports that are not at the high school. This test, excuse me, this test is administered individually to students one at a time by an independent evaluator from the school district. The test is specific to the gender of the applicant and the sport participating. Swimming happens to be one of the more difficult ones to pass in the first place. Now, I've had kids take the test, I've watched kids be, be rejected and actually been given an opportunity to a second and third time. It is not unusual for, for more than fifty percent of the students that apply to take a selective classification test in any one sport to not be able to pass the test and participate in the year in which they took the test. Parents is fine, the parents are not taking the test, you can't. Okay, I'm sorry. All right, but I wanted to clarify also about the selective classification as to what it is, because many people are not familiar with it. And unfortunately, my experience in the past has been that, that coaches at times do not make students aware of it. They're just, oh, you gotta come in tomorrow and take a selective classification test. They show up with no idea what they're doing. And whereas they probably with some practice have been able to pass the test because they've never seen the, the things they're asked to do, do miserably that first time taking it. So there's been miscommunications in the past, but it is a very difficult thing to achieve. And it's administered by, by the state just to provide for the safety of the students. Because if you think about it, when you, in, in another sport particularly, where you have seventh and eighth graders participating, which juniors and seniors in some sports, it could be a dangerous situation unless you can verify the preparedness of those students to participate.
Any other comments? All right, moving on to subcommittee, board subcommittee reports. There was an audit committee meeting. We did meet, right?
We did meet.
We did meet and we discussed the audit in detail.
Leaving with swimming numbers in my head.
And we were very pleased to see how well the, the district did in the audit. It was a very thorough examination of both our books and our processes and there were just minor instances where we could improve, not that they were bad, but that we, we could improve the processes that we were using. So I don't believe there were any other, were there any?
There was, there was a meeting of the Special Ed Subcommittee. We met for our first meeting last week and among the things we discussed or agreed upon is we're gonna meet quarterly. And then we discussed the fact quarterly being quarterly within the school district year. So we're gonna have four meetings approximately every two months to deal with the upcoming suggestions for changes or current issues or other things that come up regarding special ed.
And did the School Board Association meet?
The School Board Association did meet. Actually, under upcoming meetings, it's probably more important is that, that the next regular scheduled meeting, which is November seventh over at Bosse's, they have invited, DEHIC has accepted that DEHIC is going to come in to discuss the, the program. And more importantly, the.
November seventh?
What do I want to call it? It's the, it's the agreement. It's, it's basically how DEHIC operates and there's been some discussion as to whether they're really operating in the best interest of.
Those meetings are at seven o'clock?
That meeting is at, I believe, actually, seven thirty.
Seven thirty?
Seven thirty, at the boardroom at Bosse's. I may or may not be able to attend, so if there is somebody else that could attend, it'd be great. We did have a meeting. Spent actually some time talking about that and also learned that, no, I can't think of her name. Who's the executive director?
Lynn Kruger?
Lynn, Lynn Kruger. Lynn Kruger, yeah.
Yes, Lynn has tendered resignation.
She's retiring?
She, well, she's moving on. She's doing, doing other things, so.
She's been doing it a long time.
Yeah, so the association will be looking and talking about how best to fill that position and what it means and if perhaps it could be done by a member.
Yeah, it's a hard job to fill because it's part-time.
Yeah.
And it doesn't pay a lot.
Right. Right. She pointed that out to us.
Yes, I'm sure she did.
The, the pay has been stale or stagnant for, for many, many years, so. But it's, you know, it's an active group that continues to look and I think this DEHIC is gonna be an interesting one.
Thank you very much. Any other committees?
Yes, we had a energy committee meeting this week. Pretty much the same as the last month because we haven't got to the point yet where we can look at data as far as usage and cost. What Jill, our advisor, is doing now is looking at the historic data, the last few years. Putting all that together, still visiting sites, buildings and reviewing with staff and things that they should be aware of and should be doing. We're probably gonna set up a presentation with the board in maybe December or something, Wayne, with Synergistic. Once they have all, some data to work with and they can show us, hopefully show us where we're saving things, so. That's where we are with that.
And hopefully Jill is very diplomatic with people who are doing one thing many, many years in a row the same way. And she's gonna want them to change, so it's not, I don't envy her job myself. It's, it's tough to change, but you can, you can change.
Doug, we just wanted to add to that, we did Jill's first evaluation and I'll be sharing that with the board and she meets expectations across the board and we're very happy and pleased, you know. Couple kinks in the system outside of that, things are moving along very smoothly.
Just a comment, Wayne. Several of the, I, I've already heard some comments about it. Several of the procedures are across-the-board type of recommendations, but can be modified, in my understanding, as based on the activities in a particular building. I would just suggest that as part of her procedure and in conjunction with the buildings and grounds people, that some kind of contact be established because sometimes you'll have, you know, the gym's closed at four o'clock, there's no. have, you know, the gym's closed at four o'clock, there's no competition, and the team that normally practices at four is going, going away in an away game, but there could be a team coming into practice at six thirty or seven o'clock, and at that time, the gym needs to be powered up again and things provided for that. Now, rather than having people running all over the building, grabbing people on the, on the buildings and grounds to, to open up the buildings, to turn on the lights, or whatever necessary, if there's a list available of who to contact, that, that could be arranged in advance and go a lot smoother than the harassment that could occur, running around saying, "I got practice, the lights are off, what do I do?"
There has to be flexibility, so.
Yeah, but then also preparedness in advance with names to contact, so you can make a call in advance, say, "We're coming in at four thirty, we're coming in at six o'clock, the lights need to be put on at that time." A couple days in advance, because that way it's smoother for everybody.
Agreed.
Also would say that we did have a facilities steering forum meeting on October second.
I'm sorry about that.
We discussed, some topics we discussed was a ribbon-cutting ceremony, and just discussed some of, some of the happenings there, and also the master facilities plan, we, I think we completed the, the validation, if you will, of, of the plan to move it forward. Also discussed science lab improvements, research, may do a couple of site visits to, to look at science labs in other facilities for benchmarking purposes. And then we also discussed some of the issues, the recent issues at North Park with moisture, odors, striping of parking lots at the high school, and a little bit, a little discussion on signage as well. And the next meeting is in this room on November sixth.
All right, thank you very much. So upcoming events, I'd like to remind everybody that Monday, October fourteenth is Columbus Day, and there's no school, there for everybody. Tuesday, October fifteenth, is a policy subcommittee meeting at three o'clock over at the HPE Building. And also that night is FDR College Night, seven PM at the high school. Wednesday, October sixteenth, is the Budget Input Group, six o'clock here at the Administration Office. Thursday, October seventeenth, District Leadership Team, six o'clock, Administration Office. Sunday, October twentieth, is the Children's Health and Safety Expo. It's at, starts at ten AM, and it's at the Hyde Park Plaza. Tuesday, October twenty-second, another policy subcommittee meeting, three o'clock here in the Administration Office. There's so many, I have to scroll down. Also on that night is another college night at seven o'clock at the high school. Then on Thursday, October twenty-fourth, is the next Board of Education meeting, seven o'clock here in this room at the Administration Office.
Doug, I don't have that up in front of me, what was the first college night you read?
The first, I'm sorry?
There's the college info night on the twenty-second.
The fifteenth, October fifteenth, according to the chart I've got here.
Yeah.
What's that?
It's at DCC, it's at Duchess Community College.
Thank you, Jen.
It's.
Could you repeat that for?
Yeah, yeah.
That's at Duchess Community College.
The fifteenth?
The fifteenth.
Four Duchess or at Four Duchess?
It's at Duchess Community College, so I imagine it is geared toward that. The, the one that's hosted by our district is the twenty-second at FDR.
Okay.
So the chart was wrong. I would also, because it's a late-time decision based on the progress we're making on the capital improvements, the football game for Saturday has been listed as a TBD to be played, and the determination has been made that it will be played at the new facility at Roosevelt High School.
Okay, good.
Go Presidents.
All right. There is no need for an executive session, a second executive session? May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?